Alrighty, welcome everybody. I am going to call the Moab City Council meeting to order on September twenty-third at six oh one P M. And we'll have Miles Lofton, our city council candidate, to listen to which.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Miles.
Here I am, wearing my most flattering shirt.
Okay, so first on the agenda is public comments. Who, anybody in the audience that has a comment they'd like to make, three-minute time limit? Right, seeing none, we'll move to department updates, which we have none. And we'll go right into our two big presentations tonight. First, we have item four point one, strategic planning update with Alexi.
Okay, so we adopted a plan in June and then we began implementing it in July. So we are three months in and you're getting a quarterly update. Uh, so these projects have been implemented by staff throughout the city. I'm just presenting on them and I appreciate everybody for answering my questions and getting everything I needed to put this together for you. Okay, uh, so I'm gonna go through the top priorities here. Uh, in this presentation, improving the downtown Main Street corridor, Walnut Lane and housing options. Active transportation improvements, implementing the plans that we have and mitigating against natural hazards. Um, we'll go through our original goals for each of these, followed directly by projects that are related to that goal and where they stand and what you can expect between now and the next quarterly update. Starting with downtown, um, here we have the road safety audit, the trial bulb outs that are downtown right now. Sidewalk improvements, uh, crosswalks, improving those, uh, signals and timing and meeting with property and business owners about these projects. So going through some of the things that are going on right now, uh, the road safety audit. A lot of those things are going to show up a little bit later in the active transportation goal. Um, but one that will apply here is our updated street lighting. Uh, we, this was at a previous council meeting and, uh, the guidelines that we provided were to emphasize by increasing lighting, specifically intersection crosswalks to improve safety. Uh, we are expecting those lights to be installed in November. Um, moving on to the pilot intersection bulb outs. Uh, before those were installed, Lisa and Levi met with business owners about that. There are also informational signs up, asking people to provide commentary on it. As of September nineteenth, twenty-two comments have been received. So this will be evaluated in the coming month or so, uh, to look at those comments and decide whether this is a project that we would want to move forward with, uh, more long-term. Waste receptacles, uh, these were recently ordered for downtown area. So replacing the aging bins that are currently a distinctive style that twenty years old and a lot of them have, uh, failing hinges, um, other things. Uh, so we've ordered sixteen, uh, pairs of trash and recycling bins. So in those look sixteen locations, uh, the bins will be replaced and we also have upcoming meetings. These are a style of bin, you can see here, there's a photo, um, that can be wrapped with art or information. Um, and that's something that we'll be working on in coming weeks. Uh, so when we get those bins and that they will also, we'll have some options for wrapping a few of them. Uh, pedestrian lead time, this one is, uh, changing the timing on the signals at crosswalks, at streetlights to give pedestrians a little more time to get across, a little bit of more protection as they're making their way across the street. This was implemented at Center and Main. Um, it's been going on for a bit now and it's likely that we will want that to become permanent and possibly to expand it to other locations.
So Alexi, are you okay if we?
Yeah, we can discuss as we go.
Yeah, let's do that. If you guys are all right, let's just, if you have questions or things about this particular, um, action item. Um, let's have a conversation about that now.
Alexi, with the, uh, the bulb outs, it was, uh, we, the council got a recent email, um, with some, some great feedback. What was that included in the?
The twenty-two.
Of twenty-two?
Uh, if Lisa received it, it would have been, that's where this came from.
I, I, I had it forwarded to me by the mayor and I sent it to Lisa, so it will be included.
Great, good, thank you. Um, when will the receptacles be here?
Uh, the receptacles are gonna be here at the end of October is when we anticipate it. So we anticipate they could be installed in November.
And is the art gonna be like a separate project?
Yeah, the art is going to be separate. Uh, we didn't want the wraps to hold up the purchase of the bins. So, uh, you can purchase wrapping as a part of it, but you can also install it yourself separately. So I think for now we're pursuing separately. Um, if, for example, we came up with something very quickly, we could change our minds on that. But, uh, the idea is to have it something that we could change out over time. Um, and it could take different styles, each bin could look different.
That's great. Is the solid waste district, I mean, is there gonna be any kind of issue for?
Same thing.
Yeah, emptying them. We consulted with them about this and I don't have a photo here, but that front door swings open and it will hold a sixty-five gallon rolling bin that they can tip with their truck.
Oh, good.
So this was out of the options we presented to them, one of their preferred options because it could be compatible with their truck.
Perfect. Thanks for doing that, Alexi.
Um, on the pilot bulb outs, uh, what's, can you remind us what the timing is on that and what, what we expect?
Yeah, so the, the timing wasn't set as far as how many months or anything like that. My plan is to talk to the, to UDOT in the next few weeks. Talk to them about the comments that we've received and talk to them about what the next steps are. Um, we've received a lot of different comments about, you know, just up and down on them altogether. One of the issues that, practical issues with the bulb outs, not the bulb outs themselves, but those little curbs is after this last flood, um, they keep a lot of dirt behind them. So we have to go in there with shovels and remove that, which is happening this week. I think this, um, we helped UDOT get the dirt out of those and then their street sweepers are coming by to, to pick it up. But, um, we all, so anyways, we're gonna be talking about that and how to proceed forward. Um, I can't give you a date right now, but I'm, we're thinking in the next month, uh, this project or this, um, trial will be over.
Okay, in other words, the bulbs will be gone and then a decision needs to be made as to what exactly we're gonna do after that trial period.
Yeah, I think, well, there's a couple of options, but yeah, the, the, the bulb outs could be gone for sure. And then the temporary ones and then a decision will have to be made on, on what the final product will look like. The biggest decision that needs to be made, however, that UDOT points out to us is who's gonna pay for any improvements going forward? Or how are we gonna share on the cost of improvements going forward? So that's a big discussion that needs to happen, so.
And the decision will be made by us, by how, who will, how will the decision be made?
As far as the funding?
Uh, no, the moving forward, whether we decide to, to move for ball belts or not.
So I think, I think we'll have a lot of deference here. The street does belong to UDOT. As long as they, they are not averse to the bulb outs, I think they'll, they'll give deference to the city council. And if the city council wants them or doesn't want them, they'll defer to you on that.
Great.
So.
It seems like a lot of the concerns that people have is the safety. And I don't know how we address that or how you dot addressed that. But right now I think the temporary ones are, you know, people are concerned that you're gonna trip, you know, they're in the way. Um, and so it'd be great to hear from you dot, you know, how they're gonna really improve safety for the pedestrians downtown. And, you know, I, I, cause I think that's something we've wanted to consider also.
And that, that's on the, that's on the signage, right? Is it, did that end?
Yeah.
Actually haven't read the.
Yeah.
The tripping hazard is if you step off the curb, there's another curb.
Yeah, exactly.
Um, for a real bulb out, the curb doesn't end until the real curb. So there won't be that tripping hazard going forward. And I think that's the problem that people, um, are running into is they go from the sidewalk to the street level and then they have to take another step over top of them if they're not going directly to the crosswalk. And that's where the tripping hazard comes in. I think that's something that can be resolved with design.
And like the final product.
Right.
Final signs, like even the, the two thousand seventeen that the downtown plan has, that that was never voted in, but it has a really wonderful rendering of Center and Main with ball bouts.
It does.
Um, did, did that make it into, it would be great to, to show the public that, you know, cause it's a really wonderful visual aid for what, what this project will actually, and that, that those current, those temporary curbs are just, uh, you know, but holding things for what?
What it would be like.
What it would be like.
Exactly. Um, we chose to show a real life example on First South. It's not as big of a street, so the picture is of First South and First East. We have bulb outs on all four corners there and it shows really well. It illustrates narrowing of the street.
Yeah.
And, but, but I, I do think that that illustration where it's, it's center street and it's the actual width of center with bulb outs, that could be useful going forward when we present the findings from this, this project. So we'll keep that in mind. I think Alexi, or we, we had a conversation about that plan today, actually, so. It's one of the plans that are, that's in the, in the conversation today.
Good.
I think what would be helpful, one is to get those out as soon as possible. Um, it, just because, I don't know, they're just not that great and they are a hazard. But I also think it'd be great for you dot to present to us. Is that what you're thinking, Michael? That's?
Yeah.
After we do this temporary period and get them out is to have you dot com and say this, you know, tell us what it is they're gonna do and what they would look like so that we can get a better idea. I mean, I, I know there's visuals, but I think it'd be good to have a formal presentation for the public as well as us.
Right, and I, I think it's more of a joint presentation where you dots like, this isn't really just us, this is the city and,
Right.
and we're, we're doing most of the evaluation, really. They're, they're kinda holding back, seeing if they hear anything from freight and stuff like that.
Okay.
But we're getting most of the comments, but you dot will definitely be here. We'll try to get them actually in-house or on Zoom when we do the presentation, because they're,
Yeah.
they're part of the team.
Great, you guys okay with that?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
You know, I'm good with that. I, I guess, speaking of the downtown plan, I think, um, something I wanna make sure before we move forward for a permanent design is that we're talking about parking and kind of, you know, how, if we're implementing any other active transportation, if we're doing any other kind of, kind of design things, making sure that we're looking at it kind of comprehensively for downtown, so.
Absolutely.
Anything else on downtown questions? Okay.
Okay, uh, the next one is Walnut Lane. And, uh, some of the key actions here, we're paying off the loan, uh, doing an inclusive public engagement process, uh, developing a strategic plan, uh, for it with clear development benchmarks and pursuing funding opportunities and partnerships. As far as Walnut Lane goes, uh, there are a lot of options that are still on the table, but a lot of them aren't developed enough uh, to be in this presentation. Uh, the loan was paid off. Um, as far as cleaning up the actual lot, uh, asbestos has been, uh, something that slowed progress to doing that. Uh, having a contractor that's interested in abating just a few of the units has been difficult. Uh, Public Works is working on potentially combining that with another project to make it bigger, possibly get more interest. Once, uh, there's a plan for finishing abatement of asbestos, then we'll have a timeline for having that lot cleaned.
And our, our department is making this a priority with Public Works to get that, um, that property cleaned. Get that fin, to that finish line at least, so.
Okay, and then beyond that, uh, we also, I wanna share some updates from our planning office and their efforts to review plans and get plans through the city process. Uh, there are a hundred recently built housing units, uh, active building permits are six hundred and six. Uh, then we also have specifically affordable housing, of those it's a hundred and eighty-eight and workforce housing units ninety-four. Um, so what we're expecting to see for this is, um, timeline-wise, having a contract for asbestos abatement sometime next month, hopefully. Um, and then from there, beginning the development of a timeline for Walnut Lane in particular. All right, are there any other, any discussion on this one?
I was just wondering if like, it would be possible for the different housing units to see what type of units they actually are? So like, are they apartments, are they single-family homes, like how many bedrooms, bathrooms, stuff like that? Just to make sure that there's like a diversity of product entering the market.
Yeah, uh, Johanna has a lot of statistics about her housing.
Cool. Yeah. Right.
Is, is that possible?
We could.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
If you want to do it now.
Why not?
If you have it now.
I think it's good. Sorry you weren't prepared for this, Johanna.
Yeah, no, she knew this might happen. We talked about it like an hour ago.
Um, and those like one eighty-eight light tech and ninety-four A E H are, are, those are subset of the six hundred and six active building permits?
So the active, what we're looking at here is just our pipeline for multi, um, household units. So the active building permits does not take into account any single family or duplex building permits that we may have. Um, and then the affordable and workforce are both, um, not, not part of the recently built, they're definitely in our pipeline and, uh, may have a ways to go, but those are things that we have in the works.
So some of these projects, just to talk about where they are, cause, you know, I think that's important to, to be able to, like, put your finger on where they are. One is Ellen's project that we're, uh, the first phase of Red Rock Flats that we're talking about. Uh, the second phase tonight, actually, that's under construction and those are all rentals. And then we have another, um, unit, I don't know the name of this one, but it's on Mill Creek where they are doing their, uh, infrastructure right now. And those are planned to be, are those condos or apartments, do you know?
Apartments.
Apartments as well. And do you know the number of units on that one?
A hundred and forty-four.
Hundred and forty-four, so, so those are two that they're actively moving on, not just in the pipeline, but actively moving on, uh, within the city of Moab, so it's, we're excited for that, really excited for it.
As far as the type, these are all multi-household, so they're mostly apartments or condos. And we don't have, or I don't have right now, um, bedroom, bathroom, or hypographies, uh, for these units. If that's something that you guys would like, can jump on that.
I think it'd be great information. Hmm, cause yeah, I know there's going to be a lot of data collection and identifying like the actual needs within the community and making sure that the product that's coming online in the market is matching the needs of the community, I think. Makes sense, so that we're not, I mean, we have very limited developable land and so like kind of making sure that, uh, we are meeting, or yeah, basically using that, uh, limited resources efficiently as possible to meet the needs of the community.
Right, preparing for the future and what the needs are gonna be.
Yeah, cause I mean, like, potentially if the market's heading in a different direction, are there different incentives that we can provide to kind of nudge it towards meeting things that, like, would better suit our residents?
So we'll, we'll talk as a team, we'll talk to Corey and, and his team and we'll talk and we'll see what we can come up with as far as a, a report, um, that we can send out to show you what, what everything is. See if we can break it down, um, by the types of units and, and some other characteristics as well, so.
Thank you.
Hit that up to you guys.
Yeah, the Housing Task Force is also working on creating a, kind of what's in the pipeline. We've been asked by the county to do that, we being the task force. Um, so kind of starting to look at that, Johanna and Corey have done a lot more work on the city side. So, um, we are looking at kind of comprehensively how to answer that question.
Yeah, I think it's important for us to know what's, what's happening in the county as well. Because, you know, that's gonna have an impact on what happens in the city. So it'd be good to get that data, any sense of when that's gonna start?
It is a money and capacity question. Uh, we're, we're, I'd say we're working on a scope to bring to council to talk about what, what it looks like on the city side.
Great, thanks. Thanks, Johanna.
Thank you.
Thanks, Charlie.
Thank you.
Any other questions on housing in Walnut Lane? No? All right.
All right.
Transportation.
Yeah, so, uh, moving on to active transportation, highlights out of this one are improving sidewalk and curb ramps. Uh, striping crosswalks and bike lanes, connecting and extending, restoring trails, continuing the Moab Area Transit, uh, program and improving wayfinding for active transportation in particular. I, all right, so things that we've done in this section, uh, we'll talk a little bit more about sidewalk tonight. Uh, so sidewalk was, I'll forbid, a second time and it's on the agenda this evening. And high visibility crosswalk, this is a project that is in development. We now have guidelines for where we want high visibility crosswalks. Engineering has identified locations that would be favorable to do this. Um, from there, we need to narrow it down to our highest priority ones, put together a project. We can use state contracts to do it, so that is moving through. We hope to have a contract maybe next month. Um, and then the timeline for installation will depend on who takes the project and when it can be done. Uh, the, the county has been leading the non-motorized trails master plan and they've been collaborating with us on this. It is underway and we expect to see that in front of Planning Commission next month and then in front of City Council, potentially in November. Uh, this is for both active and recreational transportation, so it will address some connections within the city, uh, and the recommendations. Beyond that, we have, uh, the Moab Area Transit Program. Uh, Sydney, uh, worked, uh, with me on putting together an application for a Behavior Energy Action Research Technical Assistance Grant. Uh, the proposal we put together was, uh, looking at the fixed route in particular to try to make sure that that is working for residents and for visitors and looking at ways that we can encourage people to take that route to free up some capacity on the on-demand service, which currently, uh, has been struggling with longer wait times because it's so popular. Uh, beyond that, uh, we also are working with the Federal Transportation Administration. We have a fifty-three eleven ARPA grant and we're working through our annual reporting for the first time this year and working on understanding, uh, how to continue to meet those grant requirements, uh, as maybe one component of continuing the transit program. And finally, uh, wayfinding. We're in discussions currently with Alta, who's the contractor on the non-motorized trails master plan with the county to see if we could potentially add wayfinding in Moab to part of that planning process, since they're already really involved. Um, that is ongoing, so we'll see where that comes, goes. Um, we do expect whether or not that particular thing comes through, we're pursuing wayfinding. Uh, it's timeline-wise, um, sidewalk bid is obviously first, uh, but a lot of things are gonna be coming up in an October and November. Uh, and I believe the MAT evaluation will be ongoing. We're about to move into off-peak hours in October, uh, which will give us some time. Uh, Sydney's been doing a lot of work on putting, putting together some evaluation tools, like a survey to look at how people are reacting to it and, and what ways we could improve. Uh, the purpose of that being that if we're looking for grants, we wanna have the strongest program possible, so it'll be eligible.
Yeah, speaking of wayfinding really quick, I know there are some high priority wayfinding on the highway, um, to get across to follow the trail down to First, uh, West. And we talked about that recently with Kelly and, um, the, uh, the MAT bus stops. We had painted the, the sidewalk and it seems to have worked really well. It was a, it was a, it actually worked really well. People are recognizing, we're hearing people talk about it. Um, while we're waiting on the wayfinding through Alta Planning and Design, we're thinking about the potential of, of maybe using some of that same kind of, uh, wayfinding or using that same kind of, uh, application on a sidewalk as wayfinding at that one location.
Yeah.
Kelly and her staff are looking into it right now to see what they can come up with that's artistic and, and, and shows what we need to do, as opposed to us just going out and spray paint and saying, turn, turn here.
Yeah.
So, um, so it's kind of a, a look, well, I guess the, the bus stops was a little bit of a trial and, and I think people liked it, we like it and seeing if maybe it can be expanded to other places as well. Not sure if it's the, it's the cure, but it might be something that we could use in a couple places.
I think that could be a huge improvement.
Yeah.
It's great, thank you.
Alexi, can you remind me what high visibility crosswalk is going to look like?
Yeah, uh, high visibility crosswalk, I think for a lot of us, it's what we think of when we imagine a crosswalk, but it's a lot of parallel rectangles, um, going across a street, right? Uh, as opposed to just two lines on the side. Uh, so that's one version and then there's another one where you combine the two. So you've got two lines that would direct you across the street and then it's called a ladder. It looks like a ladder, so those would be the two versions that we're looking at.
I was hitting little pictures in my head and I couldn't quite remember what.
Yeah, yeah.
Three examples on Main Street at our, at those Hawk Lights on Main Street.
Mm-hmm, yeah, and they have a lot of different names and they do get kind of confusing.
Yeah.
Any other transportation discussion?
Remind us where we're at with the funding for the MAT. Notice is, has the fixed route picked up at all?
The fixed route has not significantly changed. We have seen some movement, but I wouldn't say it's dramatically different. Um, some, we've been thinking about a few things. One is, um, it drops off and picks up along Main Street, um, but that doesn't catch some of our hotspot destinations, um, which include like the library or the hospital. So we've done a little toying around with potential alternative fixed routes um, and where that would put our on-demand service elsewhere.
Notice is, has the fixed route picked up at all?
The fixed route has not significantly changed. We have seen some movement. But I wouldn't say it's dramatically different. Um, some, we've been thinking about a few things. One is. Um, it drops off and picks up along Main Street, um, but that doesn't catch some of our hotspot destinations. Um, which include like the library or the hospital. So, we've done a little toying around with potential alternative fixed routes. Um, and where that would put our on-demand service elsewhere, but it might be. A way to move more people onto the fixed route if it's hitting a few more spots that we're seeing a lot of people take on-demand service to. It wouldn't necessarily pick up everybody, um, because, you know, depending on where your origin is. Like if you live a little bit farther out, you still might not live on the fixed route. But that's one of the things that we've been looking at. We've also considered, this is part of our conversation with the Logan. Uh, system that even for their on-demand service, they have designated stops. Which helps make it a little more efficient for the on-demand service to pick up and drop people off. So we've been considering a few different options to try to streamline both services, so it's more effective for more people.
There'll also be a wonderful development happening south of town that will have hundreds of apartments. And that could also really benefit from a fixed route stop.
Mm-hmm.
Yep. Any other questions on, any other questions on active transportation? We'll move on to uh, implementation of plans. You have a lot of them.
We do. I, I won't go through all of them. Sorry, I'm having. Okay, I. So, highlights here, implementing plans, uh, was an inventory of all the adopted plans and. Launching the stormwater management plan and implementing other projects that are in our plans. Uh, oops, wrong direction. So we began adding a guide, the, like the plans into our agenda summaries. Uh, to try to provide a little bit more of a reference for where projects are coming from, so that's already been implemented. Uh, we also have an inventory of plans and we'll be in the process over the next couple of months of organizing the schedules in those plans. And when they should be due for updating. Uh, the stormwater master plan is forthcoming. We expect that to start maybe around January. And currently, the ballpark redesign, the RFP is out and that should probably be in front of council in December. So those are just a few examples. Um, Michael will be also presenting on other projects that are coming out of plans with the CIP. Uh, if you have questions about specific things, uh, there's lots of staff in the room who can help answer questions about things that are falling in different departments.
Questions on plans?
I'm excited. And all this. Could we see that? Would, would we have an opportunity to see that RFP or we won't?
We can, we can send it to you if you wanna view it. It's, it's public document. Uh, it's pretty standard RFP, but it is, it's just a reminder, it is for the design. Um, and we're making an option for them to do the construction plans as well, but that's a, there's two parts of it. First is the design going through the public process and coming up with the right design. And then there's an option for the second phase, which would be creating bid documents so that we can go out to bid. If, if it looks like it's going to get funded and built soon, we would recommend that we go that direction, so.
Yes, thanks.
You can sign up for emails to receive the bids when they come out.
Any other questions about plans? Okay, yeah.
No questions. I really love um, the way that you guys are structuring agenda summaries. It's, it's really clear to me. I love the interconnection, so. Thank you for doing that.
Yeah, and I'm gonna shout out to Savannah here. She has been an RFP rock star lately.
Have they met Savannah?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, good.
Yeah, we did.
Good.
Okay, I'll keep going. Uh, fifth and final, natural hazard mitigation. Uh, this one again is working on plans that are already in progress, specifically relating to the bridge at three hundred South. Also improving stormwater management from one hundred West to six hundred West, uh, especially along Mill Creek. And also the state assistance with the twenty-twenty-four Mill Creek watershed restoration plan. Uh, and then stormwater master plan, which we just discussed. Sorry, I'm having some weird.
I, I might add one to that. Um, we're also working on the community wildfire prevention. Plan, CWPP, and uh, we're working that, on that in conjunction with the county. Uh, and the Moab Valley Fire Department as well, so that's another uh, natural hazard mitigation plan that we're working on. And we, we actually need to have that planned. We have one now. We need to have it finished, um. By the end of the year, which we're planning on having done, so that the state will reimburse us if we have wildfires in our area. So it's a really important one to have, so. And it's just an update.
Yeah, uh, alright, so three hundred South Bridge, uh, planning is underway. That one is also, I'm going through staff review. And that will probably come uh, to city council soon. Uh, one hundred West, six hundred West on Mill Creek, analysis on that corridor has also begun. And the Mill Creek Watershed Restoration Plan. The hundred West, six hundred West that was in there, and then also we have uh, some FEMA grants for detention basin, basin scoping. Again, this is a planning, not construction level. This would be investigating what it would take to do this and what it might look like. Uh, Tusher and White. Uh, that will also be coming probably before the end of the year. Uh, partly also to stay on our grant deadlines. And then uh, Michael just mentioned fire fuel mitigation and other uh, things will be continuing. Are there any questions about natural hazard mitigation?
Just an update on the three hundred South Bridge. We met with our lobbyist on Monday. Um, nothing new to report. Um, but it's looking, it's still looking pretty positive. Uh, one of the concerns was if. The Congress doesn't see our continuing resolution, if this would be in there. And we got the impression from Ryan that that would probably, they would probably include that if they didn't pass a budget, but they just went to a CR. So that would be good.
Did they adopt a CR?
No, they haven't.
Okay, so.
They did, that was the concern. If they did, you know, there wouldn't be a budget. If it, if they approved a budget, it would probably be in there. It could probably be in there. Um, but if they don't, then they just continue the budget from last year. And so the question was, well, if they do that, would this request be in that CR? And we got Ryan kind of said they think, but the, the people that he's talking to, that it probably would. So, that, we'll find out.
Yeah, there's a deadline looming.
Yeah, there is. We'll talk about that later.
So, just curious, do we have like boots on the ground right now doing fire fuel mitigation, or are we just planning it? Uh, mostly planning, but we do have some projects coming up very, very soon. And um, I can ask Levi if you know the date and when they're starting.
The first project, oh, we're working on the Grand Rim, Rim Rim, um, and Duncan, what, group on. The first project we want started is the western section of the golf course is right above the. Fresbee Golf Area, um, mitigating that section between Spencer Road and the golf course. Or this golf course, excuse me. That should take kickoff, I think, believe the second week of November.
Okay.
Yeah, we met out there this morning and we discussed, um, the project, but alternatively the second weekend.
It's a good place to concentrate some effort, yeah.
Yes, that's, that's would be the first project of, of manning through private property and street properties.
Yeah, and just another update too, um, we, we do have a, a machine that's going to help us to tackle these things a lot quicker. That is on order as well. That was approved through the budget and that, that should be arriving hopefully this year as well.
Yeah, yeah, we'll be ready.
Okay.
Was that in our budget or part of the, the grant?
It's in our budget, um, but it's supported by the grant.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Okay, okay, this is, um, for some reason, it keeps going back to this particular slide. Okay. Uh, this is uh, basically a compilation of all of the timelines that you've seen on the other slides. Um, what I probably should also have in January is that we'll be coming back for another quarterly update around that time. Uh, and we'll have a new timeline. Um, a lot of things will probably be happening that aren't listed here. But we kind of have like a first step that will tell us what our next step is on this particular timeline. Are there any questions about anything that I didn't cover that was noticeably missing?
Can you send this to us?
Yeah.
Yes, I can.
Send us a presentation, that would be great. I mean, boy, there's a lot going on.
This is only.
Rated of it, yeah, this is only those top five priorities. It doesn't even cover some of the other things and.
Yeah, staff have been really busy and really helpful putting this together.
Is there any capacity issues, Michael?
Absolutely. So, um, we're gonna go over CIP in a minute. I think we are. Uh, really happy with everybody, not just I think that I am really happy with everybody, but I think everybody is, is giving their best right now. And, and we're doing our best to continue things moving forward, but we are bumping up against capacity for sure, but. But everything we're, you see today and everything I'm gonna talk about in a few minutes that we have underway, we're able to handle, so.
A lot of stuff.
Yeah.
Good job, great, great job. Alright, any questions on active transportation, since it keeps going back to that, I'm just kidding.
Why it keeps flipping back to that slide, but we're gonna start it after we got kicked out, so we'll call it that. Alright, then I will see you in January to talk some more about strategic planning.
Great.
In a lot of ways.
Yeah, exactly.
Thank you.
Thanks, Alexi, that was great, great, great work. I know, it's like, look at, there's me, guy.
It's my superhero, alter ego.
That's what you're doing right now with all this work that we're doing. Alright, you're up, Michael, with um, uh, action, our agenda item four point two on capital improvement plan, so more projects.
Okay, well, cool. Trying to figure out how to scroll. Alexi, how did you get it to move?
He had a little thing at the bottom.
Well, just moved on here. Okay, sweet. So, um, so I'm just gonna go over the CIP. I'm gonna actually go over every CIP project. In the order that they appear in the budget. Before I did that though, I just wanted to have a really quick overview of how CIP is funded, just as a reminder. The, the major funding sources for CIP are property tax. And then for this year, our beginning fund balance, which is um, moving forward funds that were received last year, but weren't expended last year. Uh, and some of that money is for Kane Creek, some of it's to finish up some other projects as well. Um, there's several, several different sources uh, of, that goes into that four point one. A big portion of that is last year's property taxes. Um, the three point six million that you see for this year. Or up there is actually this year's property taxes that we're projecting. All property taxes go to projects in the CIP. We transfer one hundred percent of the property tax uh, from the general fund to the CIP to support projects, like the ones we're gonna talk about tonight. Some of the other sources that we have, and I'm not gonna go over dollar amounts because they make up a, a smaller share. But um, we have grants. Every year we have several grants that uh, we have come in. Um, that could be for the police department, for the planning department, for parks and recreation, roads, whatever. Uh, transfers from enter, enterprise funds when we're doing uh, projects like street projects. Uh, we have stormwater, water and sewer that would transfer money into roads. So that they can, um, they can pay for their portion of the projects that are being completed, uh, when those road projects are being completed. And of course, there's others, very, I mean, there's everything from interest earned to donations, so. So, I'm gonna go through, I think we have six uh, pages to go through. I'm just gonna touch on the high points. And then if you have questions, I'd be happy to, to answer any questions. Um, for the last couple of weeks, uh, I've been working with staff to try and come up with. What our benchmarks are that we're looking at. What's our next benchmark and what's the date that we're expecting to get to that benchmark? And a benchmark would be something, something that is, you could ride home about, right? So, we're, we got the bids done, we got the projects approved through city council, we've got the contract awarded, things like that, so. Um, the major progress on progress on projects, you can see there's, they're highlighted in green. Um, the one hundred East and Uranium Project, uh, if anyone noticed today, that actually is open today. It has, it is open, you can drive on one hundred East from three hundred South, all the way through Uranium to the store, whatever you wanna do. But it is, it is open, it's not striped yet. We don't uh, think it'll be completely finished until the end of October. And even then, um, we might be waiting a little bit on lights. Um, that's, that seems like the one thing we're waiting for as far as ordering goes and getting materials in. Um, the other thing is the sidewalks, we're gonna talk about those today. Uh, I won't go over too much detail on that, cause I think we're gonna have a discussion on that. But we do have a uh, a, a bid that's on the council's agenda tonight, uh, for consideration of award. Would, which will move that project forward if it's approved. Um, the other thing is Kane Creek improvements, which is, the project is virtually finished. But there are a couple of punch list items, uh, so we haven't technically accepted the project yet as a city. Uh, there's a few punch list items, just like if you built a house, you would get a punch list together for your builder. Before you actually closed on it and all that kind of stuff, so. Um, and then the other thing that we're working on scope and design is the crosswalks, that's the thermoplastic. We talked about that a little bit a few minutes ago. We're looking at getting this out, uh, I think we're talking about October to get that out. And get that going as quick as possible. Thermoplastic's not exactly paint. It requires a certain temperature to be put down. We're gonna try our best to get that in this calendar year. Um, or figure out how they, we can hire somebody to, who can put it in during the winter, cause it's possible. But it's a skill, you know, and they use, they use fire to put it down, so we wanna make sure they know what they're doing. Uh, cause they can burn up those things pretty easily, which we've had done in the past. Uh, the last thing I want to mention is Pat Creek Footbridge, uh, that's going in near the Episcopal Church. Uh, we do have a date where the bridge is going to be moved off of the Nature Conservancy's property. It's a big deal, it's been sitting out there for a while. There's a lot of work that needs to be done to prepare the road down and the, and the base. Uh, for the, the crane to sit on so that it can pull it up and move it out. It's not going to be installed immediately, but um, this is a big step, this is a big benchmark for us to get this going. And I believe the date for the crane is the thirtieth of September, so it's a really, it's really big benchmark.
We wanna watch that.
Yeah. So I think they're just gonna lift it up and swing it around and.
Throw it?
Call it, hopefully it lands somewhere.
Close to the yard.
Yeah, it's close to the yard, so. Uh, okay.
Mike, back to that real quick.
Yeah.
So those, you, you know, the original budget, like the sidewalks, is higher than what you originally budgeted, so can you explain the numbers a little bit?
Yeah, so I'm only showing the original budget here. There are only two items and, and I guess I should, um, should have said it on this one. But there are only two items in this whole CIP that we're proposing adjusting the budget numbers for, and that would be an increase. It's an increase of a total of about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars between the two. The first one is the special projects, the sidewalk projects, because the bid came in quite a bit higher. And we're gonna talk a little bit about that later, but that one does need to be increased about a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. If we are going to keep the same project that we have scoped. And that's based on the bid we, bids we received, we received two and we went with the lower. And um, and then there's one other one that I'll talk about when I get down a little bit farther, if I can remember which one it is. But that's just the original bid. I'm not showing um, any proposals for amendments, just because there's only those two.
Okay.
So. Alright, so the next one is the municipal projects, and these are, these are projects that um. Levi's Public Works crew work on and in buildings that we maintain or, you know, like the city hall building and things like that. So, the big ones are, um, well, I put new system abatement on the top, uh, we're gonna talk about that. I was gonna bring it up in my. Uh, update this evening, but I think I'm gonna go ahead and not have anything to update you guys on, cause we're gonna talk about everything. But we do have, uh, we are going through a process for an abatement on a private property that you all know about. Uh, we have gone through an extensive process with this. There has been a, a bid put out for the abatement itself. We have accepted a bid and we look to have that on the council's agenda at the next meeting and it, uh, we hope. Uh, but uh, that's, that is moving forward. We've made some pretty big progress on that. So, the uh, solar installation is another big one. Uh, Alexi, uh, and I talked about this just a couple of hours ago. And we do have, and Lexi already forgot what he said. And we do have, and Lexi already forgot what he said. Um, what's the date on it? Okay, so this is for this building on top uh that you approved, the solar project should be installed in November of this year. So that's a moving forward. Um, dark sky is moving forward as well. The city council did approve the luminaires, uh the the programs moving forward, the luminaires are um coming. And the next benchmark would be they be installed and we're looking at that by the end of the year. There may be some trickle on that because there's a lot of them. Might not be able to get to all of them. On that one as well, it was brought up in the last meeting that um or a meeting uh I'm not sure, just the last few meetings that there are a number of streetlights that aren't claimed by anybody in that. Uh, the power company was going to shut those off. We went and put eyes on every single one of those, and we actually are accepting ten of those. Some of those are actually on our trails. And uh, so it, so they were really important. There's a couple in alleys and things like that. But a lot of those were just not, they would have been nuisance lights if we kept them and turned them on because they were in people's utility easements behind their houses and things like that on poles and probably shouldn't be turned on. So just an update on that. And then McKinstry is moving forward on all of the work that they're doing. I know they just installed a new uh H rack unit at the uh at the MRAC, and they've got a lot of other stuff going on, and they're, they're really doing a lot of really good work for us. The Center Street Ball Field, as uh Alexi mentioned earlier, is moving forward. The RFP is out. We've been really pushing that really hard to try and get that out. And it is out this week. It is again is for the design of the ball fields. And uh, that is being paid for through RAP tax. So we're really excited about that. Okay, so parks in the MRAC, uh, the big thing that's moving forward is the Mill Creek Evaluation. This is the Hanson Allen loose project between one hundred and truly six hundred west. But uh, we actually have done some mitigation down there as well on the five hundred West Bridge. Uh, that was on our property. Uh, we're still doing valuations in the area. I heard from uh Mark, who talked to Hanson Allen Loose that the hydrology studies have been done. They're evaluating those right now, and we're looking to get a uh a calendar next week of when this project will be finished. So I put a, I put November first. We should, we should know exactly what's going on by November first and how long it's gonna take. And we could even have alternatives to look at this year uh of what could be done down in that area. The other two things to bring up, uh, the MRAC structural evaluation, uh Patrick's been working hard on this. And McKinstry is giving us a quote. McKinstry's doing a lot of work for us right now at the MRAC anyways. Uh, they have access to structural engineers and they're giving us a quote of what it would take to come in and uh do a plan to address the structural issues at the MRAC, the swimming pool. Uh, so that's the first step uh towards getting uh some stuff fixed down there, some of the work that needs to be done on the structure. And uh, some of the major maintenance projects that need to be done down there. So uh, we are meeting on that soon. Uh, we will be um moving forward with that contract. It's actually below the threshold to it's, it's let, it's a smaller contract, so we're probably gonna just move forward with it. And uh, doesn't need to come to council, but I assure you that it will. What we're trying to do here is to meet the goals that the council has, which is to address the issues at the MRAC and and get plans together so that we can fix those things. So. And then the outdoor water feature replacement, Patrick is also working hard on that. The uh, the outdoor water feature is a big slide area. It's a big rock thing that has some slides in it and stuff. It it's unfortunately old, but it also, it also provides a an obstruction for lifeguards when they're out there and watching kids swim or, you know, so we actually have to uh add lifeguards because of that thing, where we usually only have to have two for a pool that size. We have three on duty usually. That's not the only reason why it needs to be replaced. It is breaking down a lot. It's not working well. It's causing some other issues and um, Patrick is working on finding a a suitable replacement for that, uh which will continue the water feature. But just not in the same way and provide better safety and and access for the guards. But still tons of fun for everybody who's using it. So that's the goal. So on water, so now we're getting into, and sorry, I'm just running through these. You can stop me anytime if you want to. Um, on water, now we're in our uh enterprise funds. So we're making major project progress on the SCADA system. The SCADA system is basically the brains of the whole system of operation for water and sewer. Um, we talked a lot about this this morning, Obie and I, and it basically, it's like when you used to see the the big control boards in front of the people who are running the power plants and the water and everything. It's that, but it's a program on a computer now. It can uh open valves, start pumps, do all those different types of things. It needs to be replaced and um it will help our our staff run the system much more efficiently, identify problems sooner, lot lots of different things. So they're moving forward on that. And actually today or yesterday, they selected a consultant for this. And uh, so we will be seeing a contract coming to council, hopefully in the next month uh to award this bid and get this moving forward. So the other one is the Spanish Trail Water Tank. And this is uh big news lately, but we're going through a process with the county. And uh, the county has this process where we need to go through and get an overlay zone on the existing zone to be able to put this type of use on the property that we own. And uh, so we've gone through the process, Cory and his team, uh which includes Obie and Mark and and a lot of other people who worked together on this. And uh, Dedar, who's here as well, and moving this forward and presenting to the county commission. Um, it didn't go so great with the county planning commission. I think it went a lot better with the the county commission themselves. And the closed, the public hearing closed, I believe Wednesday of last week. This closes tomorrow, and the week after this, the county commission should be making their decision on the request. Now, we have to have this to have a water tank there. If we don't get this, we can't have a water tank at that property. And this water tank, of course, is needed for fire protection, redundancy in our systems and uh between um Guisa and San Juan and ourselves and a lot of other things as well. So there's a lot of support for it. And we're, we're really hoping this will go through. So. The other two, the wa Arches Water Extension, uh we are, we are working with Arches on the evaluation of a water and sewer extension. This is just an evaluation. Um, they do not have the money at this point, from what I understand, to actually construct the project. And we haven't technically even kicked off the uh, the design of this. Mark and I are are reaching out to people and trying to find out where where they are with it cuz we haven't heard from the Park Service for a little while, which is not surprising cuz there's a lot of things going on with the Park Service. We're, we're not bashing on them or anything. They just got a lot going on, but we haven't heard from them for a bit, so we need to do a check in with them.
And that would be paid by the Park Service.
It would. It's, it's in our budget at this point, but we don't expect to expend any money on this. We put it in the budget because we weren't sure if they were gonna pay us and then we were going to pay the consultants. But the way it's working out is they're gonna pay the consultants themselves. So there should be no expenditure on this line item at all because there's no revenue source that would be coming in. That make sense? Okay. Right, um. I'll move forward to sewer. SCADA is still at the top on sewer. I won't go over that again. Uh, the downfall replacement was something, is something that needs to happen, and it goes through the nature conservancy's property. This is downfall for after the uh wastewater is treated and it outfalls to out to the to the river once it's clean and everything. The um, the downfall needs to be replaced. Uh, there was a project that we were working on with the nature conservancy which included a tertiary water treatment plant, which would treat the water to another level so that the water could be then applied in in different places, including in the the wetlands. Uh, we received a grant for twenty six million dollars for that project, and then it was quickly kinda yanked back. And it's something we're talking to our um consultants in DC about. But uh, that was, that project was going to pay for the downfall. And at this point, we are not sure that that project is actually going to happen. So we are starting to have con uh discussions with the nature conservancy on what kind of project they will allow us to construct within their wetlands. Right now, we have an downfall through there. We have an easement, but we have a a need through design, engineering to maybe move that a little bit and the installation of it and how it's installed is a is a big deal as well. Whether we bore through the ground as required or if we're able to trench. So those are things we're working on with the nature conservancy at this time. Um, if uh, if it does get paid for through the grant, um, that would be a great thing. But it's uh, but we don't have an outlook right now, or we don't have a date on when we're gonna know. So we just need to start, start looking at our redundancy plans and start moving forward with them.
This is on our CIB list.
It is, yeah. It is, and the 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 way we install it is going to have a big, is a big factor of what the cost is going to be. Trenching it is one cost. Boring it is a totally different cost, much more expensive cost. So. Okay, uh, so that's that. And then the last one is stormwater, and this is an enterprise fund as well. So the Pat Creek Stream Bank, uh, we were, we did finish that uh stabilization on on um four hundred East and Pat Creek. The detention baitness basin maintenance, I put this one in here as major progress, but this is ongoing. This, these guys are constantly working on these basins and um cleaning them out. I, I think, again, I'm giving away my, my manager's update, but I, you know, this last flood that we had last week. Um, we, they were out there right away cleaning things out. They've been cleaning out basins since then, um, got the trails cleaned up and all that kinda stuff. And it's just amazing, even, even things that we consider a small event, smallish event, how much silk, dirt, stuff they bring down and how much we have to remove. Um, if you wanna a s- a scale, um, go down to uh to Lions Park and look at the the transit stop down there and how much dirt is sitting there that uh has been piled up that just came down off of the rim and our our staff and others have have put there for for removal.
It it was pretty awesome. My, I went and rode my bike south of town like the day after. It was, I think it was a Saturday. And um, and rode on the road and they're cleaning the road. When you got out by up on top of the rim, you could see this plume of dust coming up. And it was the Moab crew sweeping the path, you know, and it was, it was awesome. It was super cool cuz um as soon as you got past the bridge, there was no maintenance, you know, um, you know, and um and it was, it was pretty impressive. Um, I was actually with a couple of people and they're like, wow, it's awesome to see the city out here on a Saturday cleaning the path. So it was very well appreciated. And it was busy too. There was a ton of people out there. So it was cool.
Yeah, they've, they've been doing great. They've been doing amazing. Uh, I'll talk a little bit more about that and the other crews that were involved as well and other stuff in the update. But um, yeah, so they're const, this is ongoing. This is not something that will ever end. And uh, no one's like, never mind. But no one's gonna notice unless we don't do it. And that's the thing is, it's one of those things that you just gotta keep on doing. And no one will even notice unless you don't do it. And then that's when, that's when we have the trouble cuz um you know, once the silk traps fill up, all that, so it's just gonna keep flowing right over and down the rim. There'll be even more on the streets and on the trails and things. So. Uh, three hundred South Bridge, um, I've asked staff to bring this to the council in the next couple of months uh because the council hasn't seen the design yet, but we have a thirty percent design for the three hundred South Bridge. We wanna expose that to the council, get it out in front of you so you can see it. And then that'll be our benchmark, basically. Um, to say if everything's good to move forward uh for the rest of the design. We've gone through several public meetings with it, so we feel pretty comfortable with it. And you know, part of it is utilitarian, you know, we're trying to accomplish something. And so, but it also has to function with pedestrians and bikes and cars and all that different kinda stuff. So and it and people live right there too. So there's a lot that goes into it.
And this was, you already had community engagement.
Yes.
So this, this design is already gone through the process.
It has. It has. It's gone through a few community um processes and then it'll, we just wanna get in front of you so you can see it. Um, yeah, and then Mill Creek Stream Bank Stabilization. You've probably been hearing about this one for years, but you know, we're we're finally through the NRCS process, and that project has been approved. And this is the Gaby and Baskets and things like that. We're looking at this going forward. And it's funded already, has been funded the entire time, but once we finish the plans, it's been about nine months or more, uh, NRCS had to review them again, and we've been waiting for that, and they are finished with it now. So we're looking at getting that in front of the council. We're, well, we have to go back to our bidders to make sure they're still on to their bid, which it sounds like they will. In theory, uh, we have to get that um solid from them. And then if that's the case, we'll bring their bid and the contract documents to the council and get that approved and get that moving forward. So, so that's, that's it for CIP. I'm happy to answer questions uh about anything I presented or um.
So we'll go back really quick on the bridge, the third South Bridge. You had seven hundred thousand?
Yeah, that's the design.
That's just the design.
Okay. Yeah, so we, we haven't budgeted for the construction of it yet. And as the mayor pointed out, we are working with our people in DC DC to get, see how much funding we can get for that. We've talked to people at the state as well, and then we'll be looking at other grant opportunities, things like that. But there's a, there's really, um, I mean, it's a real possibility that we could get funding for this. It's a long shot that we're gonna get a hundred percent of the funding. So, but, but that's okay. I mean, the the more we can get from the federal government and Utah State, State of Utah, um, the less the community has to come up with to finish the project.
Any questions? Could we get a copy of your presentation as well?
Yeah, I'll clean it up a little bit and I'll send that out too. Yeah, you too. You bet.
Wow, again, a lot going on.
Yeah.
Good work.
And and again, I meant to mention this in the beginning, but we started this budget, this CIP, July first. Some of these projects were already moving forward, but um, there's been a lot of stuff going on, a lot of work that we're doing and and the crews have been really, really, all the teams have been super busy making sure things keep moving forward.
Thank you, guys, for all your hard work. Anything else about the CIP?
All right, I guess since a a few of you are here, I I did also watch the commission meeting. I um wanna give kudos to staff. It was really amazing to see all of you present. Um, so also clearly I learned a lot. Um, and I think to see all of you together as a team was really impactful, especially um.
I watched it as well. That was probably like one of the more comprehensive presentations I've like ever seen. I think you guys covered like all the bases. I think I was kind of like proven by the lack of questions at the end.
I agree. I watched it. I I wasn't there, but I did watch it. And I, I think one of the, you know, things where you can tell you did a great job is when people get up at the end and say, I didn't agree with this, but now I see why it's important, you know, so that's pretty good.
All right, um, moving on. Anything else? Okay. Consent agenda, item number five. We have four items. Uh, we have the Indigenous People Day proclamation. I imagine there's gonna be of an event on October thirteenth, and I'll read that proclamation at that event. But I'd like, I wanted to get in in front of you. Um, five point two fraud risk assessment. This is something that we do every year. It's required by the state auditors, and then we submit it to our insurance company also. And this is kinda like the kickoff for the audit, which should be completed by the end of the year. Um, the approval of the minutes from August twenty sixth, regular meeting. And then the approval of the bills against the city of Moeben, the amount of three million, seven hundred and twenty six thousand, seven hundred and thirty three dollars and eighty three cents. And these are primarily um, the street projects, Kane Creek Boulevard and one hundred East, and also a a bond payment. So if I could have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion by Jason, second?
I can second that.
Second by Colin. Any discussion, Jason?
No.
Colin?
None.
Anybody else? Anybody else?
I just had one, yeah, wanted to ask a clear question about, I guess, the bond payments, but all of the, it's like. One and a half million dollars or something going to Utah Finance. Just gonna ask about that. Is that for any particular, but can, uh, can you just tell us a little more about that?
Yeah, I believe that's for the one hundred east project. No? Oh, Kane Creek. Yeah, that's, sorry. Yeah, and that's how they show up, um, but, and that was for the Kane Creek project. Wouldn't that be for the Kane Creek project? Oh, they are. Okay, gotcha.
Thank you.
Okay, hope that's clear. Thank you.
So, so the long-term debt probably were projects before our time?
Yes.
Okay. All right, um, I have a motion by Jason, second by Colin. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five to zero. Great. All right, next item, general business six point one, consideration of a contract award to T W S Construction in the amount of four hundred. Eighty four thousand seven hundred and thirty five dollars for the twenty twenty five sidewalk construction project. And Mark and D D R in, he's gonna present this.
Okay, hello council. Um, so I wanted to start off by just correcting uh, an error that we had in our agenda summary. I had the uh, the, just the budget amount there. I uh, said that it came out of general fund and it was ac- actually programmed into C I P. That was just an error on my part. Uh, yeah, so um, I also wanted to start off with a little discussion. Uh, I think this will kind of go a long way. To uh, uh, sort of explaining uh, some part of the, you know, our, how we came to our estimate and uh. Some cost differences between that and our low bid. Um, we uh, we developed this project. Uh, without uh, going into a full set of engineered plans. Uh, we did that for um, speediness's sake and also, you know, we saved money on the, on the front end doing design for that. Uh, that also meant that there were quite a lot more unknowns in that uh, design. And so the way that we set up those bid items was um, and those costs, was we had uh, uh. Five contingency items in there that may or may not even be spent at all. Uh, we included them just uh, for example, um. Uh, root barrier, you know, we have kind of a problem where we go to work around trees if we go to. Uh, 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 excavate for the sidewalk and we run into more roots than we think we might. Maybe we have to remove the tree, so remove tree is actually one of the contingency items in there. Um, and then uh, something like root barrier that we would then install if we were removing roots. So that uh, tree that was placed there in the future, you know, discourage those roots from going out there. Uh, so those aren't necessary items in there. Uh, well, they may be necessary items, I should say. Um, and so the way we developed these costs is we had our target budget of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And uh, we came to a low end of, and this is the number that is in the agenda summary, the three hundred and thirty four thousand. Um, which was the, sort of the bottom end of a range. And then we said, okay, twenty percent on top of that gives us something that spreads over our target budget. We think that's. Um, that should kind of get us there, uh, and that um, also includes the uh, those contingency items. Uh, so we didn't wanna undershoot that too much, because you know, we wanted to get as, as much done as possible. Um, so, uh, I just kind of wanted to give some idea there that there's some ambiguity even in the way we. Had to kind of go about doing all this. Um, uh, there's a few items in there that I'll, I'll admit to you, I would, in hindsight, I would have put a little bit higher. Uh, but at the time, we thought our twenty percent for that spread was gonna capture any overage that we might have seen. Um, I guess I'll kind of end it there for the explanation as to that part and.
And well, you used the, a square footage calculation from another project, right?
Yes.
And one of the things that I wanted to um, point out is that sometimes and if, you know, you use that from. First East, is that the one you used?
Yeah.
And there might be quantities or s- s- of scale, or how's that go? What's that? How do you say that?
Yes, you get a volume discount.
Economies of scale, thank you, thank you, volume. Um, there might have been a lower price on that because. Well, for one, for mobilization, they, they have one big mobilization for the entire project. And so we might see some smaller square footage costs for, for sidewalks on a project that's much larger. Because of those economies of scale.
Right.
Um, than we would see on, say, something like this. The other thing is that economies of scale work really well when you are doing one continuous. Linear sidewalk. And this project, it is split up all over the place. It's, it's all over the place and. They're probably gonna have to mobilize many times and come back um, to many different locations. So, so they're, they're not um. A hundred percent apples to apples, I would say.
Yeah, and so then that was our twenty percent was, we were hoping that that will, we believed at the time that that would kind of capture what that overage would be, and that's where we fell short.
Questions for Mark and D D R?
I have some comments. Um. I, I greatly appreciate the, you know, and I think that's exactly what we're also proud of having. That, you know, you two in our engineer, engineering department that uh, you know, you're able to work this up um, in-house and uh. You know, and I thought your explanation to us earlier in the day was, was excellent and where you pulled some of those numbers. Um, and I was also really excited to see. Uh, when I first opened this up, that, that this was a local company, somebody who a lot of us are familiar with, um. But uh, I still, this is, this is a really, really tough pill for me to swallow, um. You know, and I, looking at, at some of the numbers, you know, where you're pulling, you know, the square foot cost from, you know, a project that I already. You know, believe was a necessary project, something that we, I felt backed into a corner and we really had to, to move on. Um, but to, to see those numbers that, that we got from that project and then. The increase that we're seeing in those same itemized numbers um, for this project was just, that was really tough to. Me to see going from thirteen and a half dollars a square foot to eighteen dollars, um. And especially looking further into that and add sort of the, the standard cost for, for similar work. Um. I uh, you know, I also feel there, there is, you know, this is, and. You know, and recognizing how much work Jason has put into and, and, and bodies putting into this, uh, the need for sidewalk improvements in our town. Um, I uh. A forty five percent increase over the, the estimate that you, you made to what this, this bid came in, our lowest bid, uh. To me just represents a continuation of a trend that we're seeing where, you know, our, our construction bids are coming in so exorbitantly more than. Than what, you know, our engineering department is working up, our, our, you know, consultants are working up. Um, it's just a trend that I really want to uh, put an end to and I, you know, I certainly have some ideas and I would bet that you do too, um. My proposal and, and I, I can't, I can't vote for this, I can't vote to approve this, um. But, but I do understand that there is an absolute need that we improve, you know, especially some. High, very high priority sidewalks in our, in our town. And so. I would, when, when it comes down to it, I, through a discussion, I will definitely develop this, this motion, but I would like to see us. Uh, and hopefully that we can work with T W S in this, but uh, move forward in some of the highest priority areas, you know, I would think even. You know, maybe just focus specifically on section D, you know, that downtown section where we really have. A, 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 a need, it's a safety concern and, and so much else, um. But I'd like us to, to cut the scope of this project way down, um, hopefully still move forward with. T W S or somebody else, um, and get some projects, get some sidewalks uh, repaired and improved and replaced immediately. Um, but then I start one, I want us to start uh, sort of looking at how to address this and whether that's, you know, reaching out to, to some contract. Or some uh, uh, concrete contractors and, and find out, you know, what they're looking for in a bid, why we're not receiving bids from them. Um, you know, talking, I'd love to hear Levi's input on, and you know, what, whether his staff could do sidewalks or whether we could uh. Hire people and, and have them dedicated as, as our sidewalk employees, um. Or our concrete employees, you know, so many different options, but I really think that we need to uh, just, just nip this in the bud. And I, it's no longer, but I mean, we've just, we're, the, the trajectory of these costs of these projects has just gotten. Out of control and, and I think that uh, just approving this tonight would, would be perpetuating that, what I see as a real, real issue and. Um, we do have a need for sidewalks, but I, I don't think we can responsibly uh, put this on our taxpayers.
Any other comment?
Yeah. So I, I was thinking a lot about this, you know, it's Colin and I talked a little bit about it and, and I've been kind of thinking about this all day and stuff and um. Um, and I got to think about like this, I got looking at the, the scope of the project and looking at the, the projects laid out, and I think Michael kind of hit the. Hit the nail on the head when he was like, hey, you know, when you're bidding these projects where you're doing six hundred feet of concrete in a straight line. You know, you can form it, you can, you can move down the line and stuff. A lot of these are really small sections of concrete. I, um. And, you know, so at thirteen dollars um, a foot, you know, or thirteen fifty a foot. You're, 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 you're forming, you're pouring, you know, you're finishing, you're moving on, you're just moving down the line like it, like in a conveyor belt. This is, you're breaking up chunks of sidewalk, you know, in these areas. You're forming it, you're, you're maybe pouring. Um, two or three yards at a time, and then you're finishing it, and then you're breaking down those molds, and then you're picking up the whole project and moving another block. Um, in um, in my former life, I was a concrete truck driver. I used to be a cement truck driver and um. And um.
Sick.
I should have brought it, you know, I mean, sent by my cement truck, but um, it's a big deal to do these projects and um. And when you're pouring sidewalks, you know, you, you, and um, a lot of these concrete trucks or concrete manufacturers and stuff. Um, if you're not pouring more than five yards, they're charging you a surcharge. It's a couple hundred dollar surcharge. And um, you know, and so most of these projects are less than five yards at a time. You know, so the contractor is facing a surcharge on top of that. The contractor is also pouring these concretes. Um, you know, that, they're having to put chutes on, you know, um, they pour it. They, they're having to clean the chutes out, they're having to do cleanup into separate locations all over town. There's an added price to this, and I think that um, you know, like what happened, what was going on in Uranium Avenue where they have a central. Cleaning area, you know, where you're cleaning out your shoes, cleaning out your concrete. Um, this has, this has thirty different cleanout areas that um. T W S has to worry about. They have thirty different areas that they gotta form, and I don't know if it's thirty, but it, you know, you get what I'm saying? That they have to form, pour, and flat. And most of these, um, you know, I, I did some quick math. And stuff and ten yards of concrete will do about two hundred linear feet of sidewalk, you know, that's um. You know, uh, four feet wide, four inches thick, long. There's very few of this, which is even falls into that category, you know, eighty percent of it. Is um, is, is kind of in that five yard category and stuff, so I think that um. I don't think that this is, this is high, but I think for what the labor that's involved and for what's being put into this project. It's probably within the margin of, of what it would take, you know, and stuff. And even if you were, if you were a contractor and you're, you're mixing it on site. It'd still be a bigger pain in the butt, you know, than, than what this is, so um. I don't think you're gonna see thirteen dollars and fifty cents a square, a linear foot for concrete with um. You know, unless it's a big straight line, you know, so I think we gotta kind of look at, look at the project, look at what we're doing. And, and look at it as a whole, that there's a lot of extra costs.
Don't you think all that's captured in mobilization costs? I mean, it should be.
Twenty one thousand dollars?
Well, the other bid was a hundred thou- yeah, I mean, that's a, that's a, that's still a significant amount of.
Yeah, so twenty one thousand dollars, um, in, in mobilization and demobilization, um. No, I don't think you would, I think for, and I, and I'm not T W S, I don't know, I think it'd be nice to be able to talk to them and see. What their mobilization fee is. I think that's from moving from project to project, but I think that um, twenty one thousand is. It's pretty low, you know, um, compared to what, you know, the other bid was, um, what, ninety seven or was it more than that? It was.
Yeah. Washington County.
People from Washington County, yeah, exactly, and stuff. Um, so also too, if you were to deduct the mobilization fee. From this, tie still, or T W S is still the lower bid on this, you know, they still, they're still coming in cheaper. And so I think that um, the type of project this is, um. We're gonna pay a higher cost for it, um, just in the fact that it's, it's not a straight line. It's not Kane Creek where you're, where you, where there's. You know, a half a mile on each side that you're just doing in a straight line. It's, it's a big deal to um. To do these little projects. It's about as much work to do these little projects, you know, um. You know, um, just, you're, just the concrete is more expensive, you know, cause you're paying the um, the half load fee. So you gotta figure that into the concrete, you gotta figure that into the project as well. And um, so anyway, that's, I think that um. You know, the last time we didn't get a bid on it, we didn't even get uh, um, we didn't get a bid on it, and I think that a lot of that is probably. Because of just um, how hard it is to pick up and move time to time again to all these different spots throughout the city.
And they also had ninety days to, to do the first one, then we extended it to a year, so that, that allows, yeah.
So, but it still doesn't, you know, um, account for, um. You know, and if anybody that's in the construction business has something different than that, that, you know, I don't know if um, Levi or um, Cory. Probably has more insight than that than. Well, I think the, we agree with that. I mean, I, it's hard. You know, do our best to try and put out a, a, an estimate that we think is, is correct and, you know, we don't. We don't wanna underestimate, but at the same time, we don't wanna overestimate either. We don't want to inadvertently influence what bids come in at. Um, based on, you know, estimating really high on things as well, so. And if, if that makes sense to you, you know, if our, our budgets are super high, our bids are gonna come in around that amount. So, I don't, you know, we came in low. But that was what we were hoping that we could get it for, but in the end, this is, this is what it costs, and I think the fact that we didn't get a bid the first time. Um, is, and it, is indicative of what's gonna happen if, if we don't move forward with this bid. We're, we're probably not gonna get any better prices or potentially any other bids. Um, there are other options that we talked about that would be long-term options, like developing our crews more so that they could. They could do more flat work, which, which we have talked about. And that's something that um, that we'll continue to work on, but as for right now, in order to do this quantity. Even in a year's time, we, we do need to hire it out. And then the other thing I was gonna bring up is, you know, this is, this is a, an ongoing issue. It'll continue to be an ongoing issue, and I think. We should probably add it to our list of things to talk about in our, in our strategic plan that's coming up in just a couple of months, actually.
The, the, what, what's the ongoing issue or?
The ongoing issue is the disparity in bids.
Yeah.
Yeah, between the, the estimates and what they come in at, the cost and what, what we can do proactively. Um, you know, to, to head that off, because we're, we're in a passive situation. We, we don't really. Have control over, they come in what they come in out. And, but are there things that we can do in the long term? Probably, we can talk about those things, but for the short term for this project, probably couldn't implement those things in time to make a difference here.
Other questions or comments?
Um, I think like, particularly with these R F P processes, we so frequently just get bids from out of town. And like, we actually have somebody in town and, but there, it seems like there's really only one company in town that can like, handle this. And so like, I don't know that we are ever going to get a better price. Than we are right now, cause like, costs are only going to get more expensive. Mobilization seems to be such a significant factor. That it's significantly cut down by having the in-town local company doing it. But if there's nobody that they're competing against, like, do they have any sort of incentive to like, lower the, the bid that they just gave us? No. My, but material costs are gonna continue to like, increase and everything like that, and so. In a lot of ways, I think this is very likely to be the cheapest that we are going to be able to. Get this project done for, even if it is at a forty five percent increase from what was budgeted. Um, so it's, it is a lot of money. I, this is work that. Um, so it's, it is a lot of money, I, this is work that is eventually going to need to get done. Like, no matter what. Um and so like we have the financial capacity right now to be able to take this extra hit. I can ensure that it gets done. A lot of this stuff does have a safety component for community and residents. Um, so yeah, I mean, like it's a tough pill to have a project go up almost fifty percent in cost, like. That's not an insignificant amount, but I think like looking at the broader context of things, like. I don't know that we're gonna be able to ever do much better than this. Um and conversely, I actually think it's going to likely be more expensive. Um, and in a lot of ways, like we've kind of like shown our cards now. Where like this is what has been offered and I. And yeah, like there is no other competition for it, like there is no incentive for any other contractor to like. Lower their price than this.
I'd say I'm very much in alignment with Colin. I don't disagree with a lot of what you're saying. I think. Uh number one, this was verified just now, and the budget that we have for this actually three hundred thousand. So this is more like a, almost a, a double, you know, that's even more than a forty-five percent increase. I think that you guys actually did a pretty accurate estimate, um and this is more a reflection of the bits that we received. Um, I, in my other job, am actively going through a bid process. I think definitely there is a. An economies of scale, different kind of project, but you know, I I broke down these numbers multiple times, multiple different ways last night. The concrete that I'm looking at is like max ten dollars a square foot. So I think even the jump to thirteen fifty was probably a little bit of a jump and this is just that much more. Um, you know, and and I'm not here to critique D TWS, like I I think that. This is the lowest bid that we've received. Um I'm very much in alignment with Colin that. We budgeted three hundred thousand. I think that I can definitely identify a few of the more residential areas that are less of a priority. My preference would be to continue to move forward, but to stick to our budget. Um Colin said this as well, this is, you know, our first year really rolling out full budget of property tax and we're still in our first quarter. It feels really bad to me for us to in this first quarter of this year. Where we're really intentionally spending um property tax for people that gave us, you know, that hard-earned money. Um I think that we need to be staying within budget and so um. So that's kind of where I'm at. I'm happy to make a motion. I can keep going. Um I guess also looking at other costs, like I think. The thing that really hit me the most was that eighteen dollars a square foot. Um, I think a lot of the other costs of mobilization, all of that is fairly reasonable. I don't think it's an exorbitant mobilization cost. I think that a lot of the breaking up and like, you know, all the things that you cited are in there. I think the the challenge is um that the cost is higher than was expected. And I think a big cry from the community right now is we're trying to spend this property tax money. Is, you know, what people are saying to tighten our belts, you know, if projects come in over budget. Um and we don't have that budgeted, then I, you know, I think that we're kind of at a crossroads of. Well, do we go over budget or do we stick to our budget and reduce the scope? And my preference would be to reduce the scope, so.
Connie, do you have any comments?
I think if we reduce the scope, we're doing exactly what past councils have done for decades. We're just kicking this can down the road and I agree with Luke. I, I don't think we're gonna. Come up with any, any better price um by. By changing, by changing what we've already have in front of us. It's, it's frustrating and it's um. It's not a good feeling when you come in over budget. But we're, we're not gonna get, we're not gonna attract anybody if. We price ourselves so low that it's not even worth their time to work up a bid. So I, I think we just need to move forward with it and. Parts of our sidewalks are always going to be, are are always going to need to be replaced, so yeah, I think we have to put this on. Um, continued maintenance and that has not been a priority in the past.
Can I say one more thing?
Sure.
Uh and and please remember that that neither of us are proposing that we just scrap or go out to bid with other thing we're talking about. Uh immediately looking at other alternatives, immediately looking at things in-house. You know, focusing just now on that, what's the immediate need for safety concerns downtown. Um, and then, you know, at the same time, working up, because I agree that, you know, if if these, if. It's gonna take a long time to change what's happening with our uh the way the bids are coming in relative to our our estimates. But that doesn't mean we can't right now be working with Levi and and figuring out if, you know, putting, giving him to more people or something. Um, you know, figuring out alternatives to having to go out to bid for these, these small uh island projects.
Go ahead.
I agree with that, but also too, this has been on, this has been on our agenda for two, maybe three years now, you know, and last year. It was on our, it was on our CIV list even without the property tax, you know, and um and we just never got to it. You know, and and so we never even last year saw, we never even got this far where we saw a scope of what we wanted to accomplish last year. And I always thought the kind of the idea was is that we were, we never got it done, you know, last year, so that was part of. That nine hundred thousand dollar, you know, um, you know, um. That we had, I can't remember what I'm looking for, um. The nine hundred thousand, so we rolled it over into this budget as well, but also we had talked about that we would um. You know, that we were going to budget some more money so that we, we kept this ongoing, so that we were keep, that we kept working on sidewalks, you know, into the future so that we didn't have this problem. Where um, you know, where we're never not working on sidewalks till the sideways gets done and so. This project right here could be bigger than what we had planned on last year, you know, we probably, we might be doing more with that and stuff. And I think that, you know, to me, like when I look at these sidewalks that we're doing. These are the critical sidewalks that need to be done. These are the sidewalks that are in horrible shape and um. And to me, it's like, there's this many more that are, that are in, in this bad of shape or gonna be in this bad of shape and so. Um I think like when you go like, oh, we're just gonna fix it downtown, then you're, then you're gone. Well, residents then can't, you know, it it impacts the sidewalks that they're on. You know, and um so I I just think that we're kicking this problem down the road, you know, and I think that. Um, we didn't have a perfect process to do the estimate. These guys did the best job they could and it came in higher. It's no fault of theirs, you know, it's just. We had two bids that were significantly higher, you know, and I think, you know, kind of the, the real um budget is is. Cost is somewhere in between that, you know, and stuff, so I don't, I don't think that um. It makes sense to reduce this project and take, take it out on the residents also too who don't have good sidewalks.
I have a couple of questions. If we were to like significantly change the scope of this project, would we have to send it out to bid again?
I, it depends. I think we can go back and negotiate with the contractor and see what their appetite is for. For adjusting it, but it's, it's completely up to them. If they, if they say, no, I don't, I'm not interested in that, then yes. We, we would, we have two options, go to the next bidder, which was a lot more, or go out to bid again.
So they're like, we don't run into like any risk of if we significantly like reduce the scope, like. We didn't give the other bidder an option to like present another.
Um, we'd have to look at that, see if that's something we wanna put out there, but if we're going off, we'd have to negotiate with them and I think we would just do our best to. Whatever the law says, we have.
Yeah, I'd say, yeah, at a certain point, reducing the scope of it would mean we'd have to go back out to bid. But it's still not gonna change eighteen dollars a square foot.
Right.
For concrete.
And we're running the risk that we're not gonna get any bids.
No, it's like one of the things that I'm bringing up is potentially if we make too big of a change, like we are kicking. What we can get done right now, or would, would, we would like to get right, done right now, further on down the road. Where like there is more uncertainty like pricing wise. Um, and then kind of in terms of like funding this project itself. Um, I do know that we have like um certain likes surplus reserves and everything and I reading in the newspaper. Like we've been doing pretty well. Is it possible to apply three hundred thousand dollars of the property tax funds? And then pay the rest off with some of those surplus funds?
Yeah, so as far as funding goes, I don't think it'd be a problem to to do the funding. The, until the budget amendment, we would just hold back on some of the other projects to make sure that we're not spending over our authorized limit. But if the council wanted to add to uh to the budget on this item and adjust the budget three hundred thousand dollars. We do have funds to do that within CIP, not, not the general fund, which is separate. But uh we are, we are, we are carrying a balance in the uh capital improvement.
Yeah, and I guess like in a lot of ways, this is like a bit of like a shell game, but as in terms of like preserving the integrity of the property tax. Promise that we made to the community where like this is what we budgeted and for that was going to be funded by property tax. But we do have excess funds like in other accounts that could potentially supplement like those costs so that we're still. Freeing up other parts of the property tax revenues to adjust other capital improvements that need to be done within the community. Um, but like and I don't disagree that I think a lot of uh potential steps that Colin had outlined. Like make a lot of sense for us to pursue, but I would like to remind that Mike. Michael did ask about capacity earlier in the meeting today and like it had been identified that a lot of the teams are already at capacity. And so like here we are potentially asking them to take on like uh. New projects, potentially take on new staffing levels and kind of like develop new. Like maintenance, like scopes and everything like that and in a lot of ways, bringing on new staff like with salaries and benefits and everything. Can add up to um much more than like a hundred and forty-six thousand dollars. Like that's basically, I could, I can see that being like two to three staff for a year. Um, are the costs and like, I don't know that we'd wanna hire people on for a year. We probably want those to be ongoing staff. And so like, are we potentially overcompensating staff-wise, short-term for something that might not need that level of staffing? Um, so those are like some of the things that I'm just like kind of taking into my calculation of this. But yeah, I mean, I get it, it it's a difficult position to be put in, I think. We have consistently heard communications from the community to be much more disciplined with our spending. And it's really hard to like argue against that when we consistently put out these like estimated budget amounts and like. We end up approving projects that are twenty, thirty plus percent over those amounts. I, but it is, it's, I I think the difficulty of it is the situation that mine finds itself in is. We are not going to get a lot of competition for bids. Um, and so like, we don't really have references within the market to be able to make accurate bids off of. Like, and so in a lot of ways, we are at the whim of whoever's willing to put in a bid. Um, like, and I think that makes coming up with accurate bids so much more difficult. Like, we don't have the same number of data points to try to like come to a more accurate thing, like we are. By our own nature, chewing a lot more in the dark than a lot of other municipalities would be.
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
I'm going to award the contract for twenty twenty-five sidewalk construction project to TWS Construction Incorporated, an amount of four hundred eighty-four thousand, seven hundred thirty-five dollars. And authorized the mayor to sign the agreement, notice of award.
Motion by Jason, is there a second?
Oh, second.
Second by Luke. Any further discussion, Jason?
No, I'd just like to say like even like um, we, when I, we did the math on this last night, it came to. The difference between eighteen and thirteen was about forty thousand dollars, you know, that if you take forty thousand dollars off this bid. Still comes out to, you know, four hundred and forty thousand dollars, you know.
Sixty thousand.
Four hundred sixty thousand. That what it was?
Yeah.
Yeah, and um, you know, so it's. It's still a way over bid, you know, and stuff from, from that estimate and um, you know, and I, I just feel like. Having done this before, I, I know what it's like to move around.
Luke?
So I know Michael had stated that potentially we can like go to the contractor and like see if there's any further like negotiating. That can be done or identifying maybe like smaller portions of the projects that um. Maybe aren't as essential as others uh to cut down on immediate costs. I, I don't know if like, I, we can like amend the motion to try to hit a. I guess like all we would really be able to do is to like to direct stat, like approve it while directing staff to try to negotiate down pricing.
Yeah, and and we can, we can, is it okay?
Yeah.
Okay, um, we can definitely do that, but you know, I think that there's some really good points made tonight. One of the, one of the best points that I heard tonight was um that these things are, still need to be done. And they're probably not gonna get cheaper, you know, so, so cutting, uh we can definitely work with them. Um if we go too far, it sounds like we're gonna have to go back and and maybe give other people an opportunity to bid as well, so it adds a little bit more time. But the um, the I, the idea that it could, cutting it out now could save us money. Is only a today thing. It's, it's, it's probably only gonna save us money today, because eventually we are, every one of these sidewalks needs to get done.
I guess like my question is, is kind of going to the economies of scale, like are there any of these like. Short yardage, like sections of concrete adjacent to things that might not. Have required immediate fixing but are getting there. So that I kind of like delaying that fix opens up a longer stretch of sidewalk to then be like.
Yeah, we, there's always the option for us to go back and and work with the contractor on scope and everything. As long as we don't get to that point where we, we're redoing the project, then we have to refit.
And remember, this is a year-long project.
Yeah.
So it's for an entire year, so that. The idea is that he'll get to all of them within the year.
Yeah, and and however you guys end up deciding is exactly what we'll do, so we, we wanna support you in what you wanna do, so.
And I guess like, a large part of my concern is that like we are seeing inflation numbers rising. Like, the way that property taxes are collected in Utah doesn't account for inflation. And so like right now, like our dollars have the highest spending power. Like, and with inflation rising and everything like that, a couple of years down the road, we're not gonna be collecting more property taxes on a yearly basis. Like, we have this like three point five, three point six million dollar budget and that is all we're, we're collecting. And so in terms of our ability to like address some of these capital improvements projects. Like now is when we have the most spending power with those property tax dollars. Um, so.
Any further discussion from others?
Yes, um, I feel as though uh I can't support this. Um, I hear you. I think in order to address that, I think that this is an important, but not inherently an urgent problem. Um, that we need to address. Case in point, it's been on our list for a long time. I think we budgeted for it. I think even when it was presented, this initial scope was like, this is our first phase. And there are so, there are so many neighborhoods without sidewalks. There are so many places in town that need sidewalk repair. Outside of this scope, so um my preference would have been to rework this. Either to, you know, if, if it is an economies of scale thing, we really expand that project and we bring in. We make it more attractive to other contractors that can do it on the timeframe that we want. So it's more of a million dollar project and it's like a, a, a big investment project. Um, or we stick to our budget and we, we reduce the scope and we say, okay, this is what we can afford to do right now. And we're gonna save these areas and we're gonna do another scope and we're gonna start planning for those and we're gonna adjust our cost assumptions for that. Um, especially because in our, our first meeting of the year, we, we did the solar thing. I, you know, solar panel replacement, that was what, like a half a million dollar budget increase as well. So for me, for us to be end of September, not even through our first quarter and for us to be potentially. Seven hundred thousand dollars over budget, uh just doesn't sit well with me. I think that there, there are ways to kind of look at it and and reapproach it. I, I think I, you know, that's, that's just where I'm at, I think. Um, yeah, this is too hard of a pill for me to swallow.
Let's just finish. Anybody else have a discussion or thought?
Uh, with all the sidewalks that need repair and replacement in town, we're gonna be having this conversation over and over again. And so I mean, like back to my point, I, I think that uh.
And so I mean, like back to my point, I I think that uh, you know, trying to figure out some way to to get around this system, doing it in-house. You know, it's it's a year project. A lot can happen for our own mobilization in a year. Um, which also sets us up really well for the net, the upcoming years to to get sidewalks replaced. We commit now to this. We have this conversation again in a year, um, when we're putting more sidewalks out to bid. We again talk about doing it in-house. Let's just right now, let's, let's reduce the scope of this project. Start figuring out how to do it in-house. I'd have this conversation again.
Jason.
I just want to bring up one thing that I kind of looked at really fast here. The Uranium Avenue project was four inch concrete sidewalk with base. Um, this project is a four inch concrete sidewalk with base and fiber. So fiber adds, you know, there's gonna add, you know, um, money, you know, um, to it. So it's a, it's a different concrete.
It's, it's, that's insignificant. The uh, and and they should have been, that should have been reinforced, like the sidewalks on. I mean, I think that's a pretty standard operating that you would.
Putting steel in the, in the path.
Oh, fiber.
Oh, oh, the fiber.
Yeah, fibers.
Uh, yeah.
Did they put fiber in this?
Off the top of my head, I actually can't remember if we did put fiber in that.
It's an inclusion.
Yeah.
Sour dough bread. Put raisins in.
I don't think we did, though.
Who puts raisins in sourdough bread? Well, if you put brown sugar and cinnamon.
Okay, I'm just gonna go ahead and.
Uh, off the top of my head, I don't think we have fiber in that concrete, no.
All right, um, I'm gonna call for the question. We have a motion on the table to improve, a motion by Jason, seconded by Luke, to approve contract award to TWS Construction in the amount of four hundred eighty four thousand seven hundred thirty five dollars for the twenty twenty five sod sidewalk construction project. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Uh, roll call. Kaitlyn?
Nay.
Colin?
Nay.
Tony?
Yay.
Luke?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three to two with Caitlyn and Colin in opposition. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you.
Thanks for your good work in this.
Yeah.
All right, um, uh, yeah, last item on our. It was a good discussion. I, you know, it was a good discussion. We, you know, we can't always be unanimous on everything.
Absolutely.
Consideration of acceptance of the petition for annexation for the property located at fourteen ten South Highway one ninety one, Moab, Utah, eight four five three two in the city of Moab. And it's nice to see Ellen here tonight, and Johanna is gonna present this to us. And um, this, we've heard this before, it's just another part of the annexation process.
Yes, hello.
Hello.
Um, so as a refresher from last year's pre-annexation, this is the property we're talking about, fourteen ten South Highway uh, one ninety one. Right now, it's in the county. Um, we're accepting the petition to annex in tonight. Um, and it would be zoned C four if we brought it in. Um, more about the pre-annexation agreement that was approved, oh, February twenty seventh, twenty twenty four. Um, during that process, it was uh determined that that was within our annexation area boundary. Um, that agreement also settled some, the zoning, uh, what was gonna be developed and the percentage of A E H. So here's our roadmap of annexation. We are at the petition stage. Next step tonight is exception or rejection. Um, and then the recorder will do a completeness review and certify. Any questions about the process?
No, but thanks for the reminder. That's always good to have a reminder of how this process works, cause it is complicated.
Very handy visual. Okay, well, if we don't have any questions, I have some motions.
So are you asking for a motion? Any questions for Johanna?
She's following through the question right now.
Any questions? Curious if Ellen wants to say anything?
Sure.
Yeah, that'd be great.
So, thank you for having me. Um, so this parcel is one point eight acres. It's adjacent to our current parcel, which is three acres and on which we're currently building seventy two apartment units. Um, Luke, you asked earlier about unit mixes. The um, the unit mix in the phase one is two thirds, one bedrooms and one third, two bedrooms. And the way the building is shaped, some of these units actually have another room, which could be used as a, an office or an additional bedroom. Um, uh, one bedrooms have one bath, two bedrooms have two baths. Um, and the configuration of this site has additionally a management slash um, maintenance building. The adjacent site, which we would like to now annex in, would just be a second phase to the existing project. And that would allow for two additional buildings, which would mirror the buildings that we currently have. Um, and we think we, you know, we have not gotten site plan approval yet. Obviously, we need to go through the annexation process, but that would allow us probably between fifty and sixty additional units, all of which would, or fifty percent of which would be um, the A E H actively employed household units. So fifty percent of the units would have, renters would have to meet a qualification that they work at least thirty hours. Um, I think a week in Grand County.
And um, Ellen is also working with USU.
Yeah.
You know, to partner with them for some housing units to be dedicated to the USU.
Yeah, so we've had discussions about their need for student housing, student faculty housing um, in order to continue to expand their student base. And so we have, um, we've had preliminary discussions about the university um, potentially leasing or reserving units for students and faculty that are coming throughout the area to um, to attend classes or work at the university.
That's great.
Ellen, when, when do you hope phase one will have people in it?
So we expect to complete, um, get our certificates of occupancy in March. And um, we plan to start leasing or pre-leasing in the first quarter of the year with move-in dates in April.
Oh, that's great.
And then ideally, this annexation passes because we already have a building design, a footprint. Um, you know, the, now the approval and process of the building department. We're hoping that we could actually get to a approval by the end of the year and start construction on the second phase by February. With anticipating that we would have, then have units available in the second phase to lease um, probably by early twenty twenty seven.
Great.
That's awesome. So how many total units with both phases?
Uh, between a hundred twenty two and a hundred thirty two, depending on.
Perfect, yep, good.
What we can fit on the site.
Any other questions? I'll ask for a motion otherwise.
Uh, I move that the Moab City Council accept the petition for annexation for property located at fourteen ten South Highway one ninety one in Moab, Utah, eight four five three two.
Good second.
All right, motion by Caitlyn, sent by Colin. Any further discussion, Caitlyn?
No, exciting, yeah.
Colin?
None.
Anybody else?
No.
All right, all in favor?
Thank Ellen because she's been a really good partner with, with the, the city and the projects are some that are moving forward and it's really nice to see.
Good, thank you.
And she loves coming to our meetings.
I do love coming.
Girlfriend, you need to get out more.
All right, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. All right, next phase.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that's the end of our general business. We'll move into city manager updates, which we've already gotten quite a few.
Yeah, I'll try to, try to pretend like I didn't tell you some of these already. Uh, so I. All right, number one, check. Uh, number two, check. Uh, so I just, I did want to say thank you to everybody who responded uh with the flooding last week. Let's see, was it last week or the, it was the week before last on Friday and Saturday? Um, we have such a great team. Uh, we uh did create the incident command. Um, we have a sergeant here tonight who was in charge of that, Scott Finlayson, and did a great job. And we had a bunch of public works employees who were out working and, and I noticed too that they were on it. And they, they haven't stopped. Uh, they've been taking away dirt, getting rid of stuff, cleaning things and and have really been doing a great job. We did have staff out there at the time as well, even though it wasn't a major flood. We still had a lot of surface flooding on roads, especially four hundred north. And I saw our crews out there talking to people, offering assistance, uh, digging out storm drains, all kinds of stuff. So really proud of our, our staff and all the work that they're doing and all the professional and capable people we have on our, on our team.
Absolutely.
And uh, one hundred east is open and it's paved, so that was my, that's. So one hundred east obviously is the big project we've been working on and, and we, I'll just mention that one again. I won't mention the other ones. It is open. Uh, people can use it. We're hoping to get it striped soon. Uh, this, I walked it the other day on the sidewalk. Sidewalk is amazing. Those wide sidewalks are awesome and feel really good. And I think it'll be a great enhancement to our trail system and, and safe routes to schools, so.
Great, thank you.
Bet.
Moving on to council reports, and I am going to start with Luke because we're so glad to see you here. We know you've been really busy and probably haven't done anything but take care of your son, but we're glad that you guys are back. And so um, you don't even have to make a report unless you've done something.
No report. I'm just like really glad to be back and um, just really would like to express on behalf of my family like the amount of like support and well wishers and outreach that we receive from the community. Um, through uh, at least as a couple, has been like by far and away the most difficult period in our lives. Um, not the way that we expected to start our family, but um, it was a very good reminder that although we have started this beautiful nuclear family, there's also a really beautiful family within this community, and I'm just really appreciative of uh being able to be a part of it. So just wanted to thank everybody.
We're looking forward to meeting Arthur.
Oh, I'm.
Yeah.
Excited to show him off.
Yes, we can't wait. We can't wait to see him and meet him and welcome to our community. Thanks, Luke. Tony?
Okay, um, my meetings kind of all got moved around, but I did go to a meeting at the museum. Just um, it was not a noticed meeting. It was just to um, meet with some potential new board members. And one gentleman, I cannot remember his name, and I can't find my email. But um, Kelly McInerney has joined the museum board and Nathaniel Clark is also interested. Oh, that's great. So I think they will both be, you know, really good, um, good additions to the museum. Um, and please check out all their programming for fall. There's some, there are some really good activities that staff has worked really, really hard on. And um, staff at museum is doing a really, really good job. And I just want to remind you that on August, August, October first, USU will have an open house and they will be kicking off Paint the Town Blue. And there will be prizes for the business that decorates their place of business. And um, you can go out to USU and look around. There will be folks out there to answer your questions about.
What's Paint the Town Blue? What's the purpose of, are we supposed to paint the town blue? Joette, am I like out of the loop?
Big figure.
Aggie, Aggie, Aggie Blue. Oh, colors are blue and white.
Thanks for asking.
Oh, dang, sorry, USU. I'm a U of U person.
Ice cream.
There will probably be Aggie ice cream.
How good.
And then I have some more meetings this week. Okay, is that it, Tony?
Yeah.
Thanks, Caitlyn.
Sorry, this chair is like. Tripping on myself. Um, okay, um, after our last meeting, I went to an L P C League uh, Housing Subcommittee Meeting. They've continued to talk about uh changes to modern income housing plan, um, detached aid news. Um, lots of things related to the strategic housing plan. On the fourth, I had a meeting with Mayor and Jason and then went to a Housing Task Force meeting. Um, talking about pipeline analysis, talking about um, doing a lot more collaboration on housing data. Cause I think everyone's asking that question of what's in the pipeline. You know, I think Cory put it out at the town hall that there's potentially two thousand units in the pipeline. And so it's just, we can't stop talking about it. It's just exciting. Um, and then the eighth to the tenth, I was at the Utah Housing Coalition Housing Matters Conference. Um, so missed a couple of meetings with that, but always a fantastic time. I got to introduce um, Steve Waldrup and Laura Hanson for their presentation on the Strategic Housing Plan Updates. And um, just a really nice time to connect with people across the state, um, kind of in my world. On the twelfth, um, started and ended the week with Steve Waldrup. He was here in town and we had a lunch. Uh, Josie Wides talking about housing. It was um, myself, Ben Riley, Brianna Medina, Bill Winfield, Curtis Wells, and Liz, he joined us as well. Um, talking more about the, the housing plan, talking about kind of our infrastructure needs and kind of this balance of density. Um, the governor was supposed to attend but couldn't, and so we talked a lot about his thirty five thousand starter home initiative, what that looks like down here. Um, and then was honored and grateful to have Joette, Michael and Jason come to the ribbon cutting at Roya Crossing after that. Um, just a really special week in, in my world. Um, so grateful to end it with you guys. Um, and then last thing on housing, um, we have kind of a, a little subcommittee talking about housing policy related to the city that we want to start bringing to, to council to start talking more about um, all of that. So we had a, a meeting last week. We're putting together a priority list, um, so we can have more of like kind of a polished conversation to talk about as a group. Um, otherwise, uh, went to the League of Vote and Voters Debate. They did a fantastic job. Casey and me did a fantastic job live streaming that. Um, just been going to, you know, having fun going to election events and talking candidates and I'm excited for the next couple of months. Um.
Glad you are.
Colin and I have the, the easy job.
Yeah, right.
Let us enjoy it one time before we have to experience reelection, but. Um, and then last weekend, um, I was very involved with Moab Pride, um, had their pride weekend uh, this past weekend. Um, and just the organizers did a fantastic job. Um, really want to highlight that, um, especially on the city side, um, the, that we had a drag show at the mark. And um, it's really important for me as a member of that community and as a member of the city to be able to um, kind of give space and support joy um, in this community. It was just a fantastic weekend, so um, that is it for me. Thanks.
Thank you, Jason.
Um, so a few, had a few meetings over the last month. Um, I attended, um, I attended a winter festival meeting with Levi, which we met with um, the Moab Chamber of Commerce, the county. Um, and a bunch of other entities um, attended uh, to talk about the winter festival coming up in December. Uh, we talked about Christmas lights and trying to coordinate Christmas lighting with the county and seeing if we could kind of help them with um, with what their vision was, which they have a vision of um, lighting up the bridge over the river. And then up the path and then um, and then they're gonna um, then the goal is to light up the cottonwood tree. I guess they call it the million dollar cottonwood tree, cause um.
It's the only one that.
Cut the bridge around it or make the bridge go around it. And um, and then from there, they're gonna do a um, they're hope, they're trying to find a tree up on top of the rim. And um, the county is, and they're gonna light that tree up. They, they got a partnership with Goal Zero and um, to, to light it up. And it's gonna kind of be a um, an iteration of the um, the Christmas tree in Rockefeller Square that gets cut down, you know, and hauled across the country. the Christmas tree in Rockefeller Square that gets cut down, you know, and hauled across the country and put up. This is gonna be a tree that doesn't get cut down, that gets lit up every year. And you can either like, um, and you can see it in height to it, I think.
Sorry, it'll be, it is more like at Solitude Resort. At Christmas time, there's a tree on top of the mountain that they light up every, so similar, you know, comparing it to the Rockefeller tree.
So, um.
Stretch, but not cut it down.
So we had a meeting and then later that day Levi and I, um, went out there and met with, um, Commissioner Martinez and, um, and another person who knows a lot about outdoor lighting, kind of came up with a plan about what was needed. And it's gonna involve, um, a lot of lights. Um, the county has budgeted, um, about forty-nine thousand dollars, um, for lighting up the bridge. And then, um, and then, um, we had talked about how we could kind of help with that process. Um, they put it off, put them down. And then, um, and then kind of coordinated all the, um, and what we take to light it up, you know, stuff. So it's gonna be a big deal, but I think that it should be pretty amazing, you know? And so then we talked about, um, Levi showed everybody the, the lights that the city, um, had budgeted to put down Main Street. And everybody thought it was absolutely amazing and we're super impressed with that. And, and, um, I think there was kind of, it's good to kind of coordinate themes and kind of get everything together. So.
And so the city's not gonna be putting out any money for this other than the lights that we bought. We're just gonna be providing.
Yeah, it'll be kind staff or, yeah, and then the lights we're purchasing that were budgeted. Yeah. Um, and then, um, um, I had a meeting with the mayor, um, and Caitlin, which was good. And then, um, and then I had, uh, um, an airport board meeting. The airport board has some neat stuff going on. Um, the, the county commission approved, um, a paving project, which was, is, which is basically, um, paving some additional taxiways and areas that will, um, help, um, utilize those areas to help build hangars. That the people, there's people that want to build hangars, but they haven't, um, had, um, but there's not asphalt running by those hangars, you know? And so this will help, um, facilitate building of hangars and, um, people, you know, actually pull airplanes out and fly away or whatever. So, um, that was, that's really good. I think the, um, the, they've also approved, um, they're also working on some marketing, um, projects with Contour Air to help promote people flying to Moab, um, and, and out of Moab and stuff, which is, which will be great for all this. And then, um, then I attended, um, a Moab Motorized Trail Committee meeting, um, where we went up and we, um, walked along an area up on San Plas, trying to connect, trying to find a motorized route to connect bins and things, um, to, um, um, the Silk Rock Trail for motorcycles, not for anything else, just for, um, either bicycles or motorcycles and stuff. So, um, that was really good. And then I went to a travel council meeting. Um, and we discussed a lot. They're kind of in their budget process. I also attended one today where they're just kind of going over budgets and they will be presenting the mitigation and advertising budget to the county commission in the next few weeks. And then, um, I also attended a Grand County EMS budget meeting, which, um, was really interesting because it was kind of coming up with a budget if the, um, healthcare tax passes, if it doesn't pass. And, um, you know, and so they're kind of in this limbo spot of what, how do we plan our budget for next year? And, um, so there, there's a lot of discussion about that and how to proceed. And I guess more to come on that in the next, um, the next little while. And, um, I had some good conversations this week. I had, I've, I've been meeting with a lot of people or a lot of people have been calling me about some things. One was one that Michael addressed, the, the mitigation process that will hopefully be happening in the next couple of weeks. There's, um, a lot of people are, a lot of, and I, I'm just bringing this up just there. I want to make sure that people know that we know that, um, that they're, they're concerned, that, um, people have concerns that people are, um, that semi trucks are, are, are running through red lights on Main Street. And they would like us to, to do that. And so I, I felt that I, I need to kind of bring that up to show that we, it is a priority for us and that. And also there's, um, a lot of people who are concerned about, still concerned about UTV noise and, and wishing that the city would do more with that. And, um, which I told them that, um, we would work towards and stuff. And, and then I've had quite a few people who say they really love King Creek, um, and they think it looks really nice. And, um, and if the plants die, they will hunt us down.
We have, we did, um, we've assigned people to watch those plants.
Um, so anyway, um, and that's, that's about it that I have. So.
That's a lot. Thank you. Colin?
Um, fourth, I attended a non-murals travel management plan open house, um, where we, uh, were able to look at all of the community input that's, that's happened online and, and community members were, were invited to come and, and, you know, have another opportunity to, to provide input on those. It, uh, it was a lot of, a lot of heated discussions, a lot of really productive discussions, but I think all in all, it was a really great event. Um, and so that, that plan keeps moving forward. Um, and then I met with, uh, the mayor and Tony on the fifth. On the ninth, I, I had a trail mix meeting where, uh, you know, the trail mix meeting would be really excited to hear that the Skunk Alley Bridge is the bridge by the Episcopal Church is, is moving forward soon. Um, that came up and was discussed a lot. And then if you haven't already, um, if you haven't checked out the, the search and rescue, uh, podcast, Back From Beyond, it's excellent. It's really, really great. Um, I think there are three episodes out right now. And so, uh, please, please check that out.
Was it called again?
Back From Beyond.
Oh, I've heard of it.
It's really entertaining. Um, a lot more to come from that. And then I also attended the, the debate, the League of Women debate. Uh, and I would agree with Caitlin that it was glorious to be sitting in the audience. Really enjoyed that. I could like to do more of that. Um, and then I had a solid waste meeting on the seventeenth. The big news is that, that, uh, compost, the big commercial composter is en route to Moab. Um, the pad is poured, it's, the electrical is run. And so that thing is going to be turning sooner than later. And, uh, you know, hopefully have a, a product, uh, in not too long. And, you know, it's gonna be a lot of just, uh, sort of experimentation and, and working before it's opened up to the public. But that is a, a big, exciting step. And then also I just want to again, say a big thank you that, uh, you know, I, I was out of town during the flooding and to drive back in and to see that, that path north of town clear. And I, I really feel like this is a, a new era for the city of Moab where we're, uh, prioritizing, uh, the active transportation networks as, as highly as we're prioritizing the, the automobile network. So thank you very much.
Well, I would like to give a shout out to your guys out there at the Solid Waste District. I've had occasion to be out there a couple of times in the last little bit and they've always been so helpful.
Yeah.
So kind there.
They really have some good things going on. Yep. Thank you.
That it?
That's it.
Thank you. Um, I have been very busy, as you all know. Um, there's so much going on. It's just amazing the things that are happening in this community for our residents. It's just, so I've been going to all of them. Um, I was asked to welcome the opening of the Moab Music Festival. So that was great. And to also acknowledge Michael Barrett and Leslie for their work, because they are no longer overseeing the music festival. So it was good to, to see those folks. I always, I also was, um, welcoming the pride folks at the Rotary Park to kick off the march. And I also did a proclamation for Recovery Days, uh, back in early September. Met with Erin, I can't remember her last name. She's with the Norda Foundation. And there were several organizations in town that asked for a funding grant that they have. They've, you know, they, the way she explained it to me is this is a charitable foundation in the state of Utah. They want to spend all of their money. And so they allocated a certain amount for two years for, um, for a variety of projects in Moab. And there was a handful of maybe ten or so that made the finalists. And so she called me to get some references and I supported every single one of them. And so hopefully they're all gonna get funded. I had a certain meeting in August, uh, after our last meeting. And then I have another one this Thursday. And then in November, there's going to be a meeting with Laura Hanson from the state to talk about a project that the governor really wants to, to focus on in the state of Utah. It's called Build It Here. And we identified transportation connection between the Wausatch Front and southeastern Utah. So we'll be meeting, um, the twenty-fifth with all the folks that are going to be involved in that and kind of start formulating a plan so we can implement some better transportation, air, improving the roads and rail. Um, met with Jen Sadoff to have a sense of what their concerns are with the Medicare, potential Medicare cuts coming up. There is a hundred million dollars grant that's available through the state for rural hospitals. And so they'll be working on trying to get in line for that funding if those cuts do come down. I also met with the Free Clinic and got a tour of the clinic and they will be presenting to us at our next meeting. Um, I, and they are gonna offer you guys to come and tour. It's, um, about ten to twelve percent of the residents in Grand County use the Free Clinic. About forty percent of those, and, and Kate will come and probably give you more detail, are from the Latino population. And seventy-seven percent have no health insurance at all, uh, of the visits that they have. And then, um, fifty-four percent are tourism-related employees that don't get benefits from, from their jobs. Um, so anyway, very great. I'm glad that the city helps support them because they provide a wonderful service for a lot of our residents. I mean, ten to twelve percent is a lot of people that utilize that service. We met with our lobbyists on Monday. Um, it does look like, I mean, you know, Lizzie, I know you've asked me about this. We won't know until it happens, but there's a pretty good likelihood there's gonna be a shutdown October first. And, you know, we don't know what that's gonna entail, how long that's gonna be. They anticipate if there is a shutdown, it'll probably be a couple of days to two weeks. I'm gonna give a call to Natalie Randall, um, tomorrow or the next day to see if the state is, um, planning to help support the park service like they have in the past, right in the middle of our busy season. That's not ideal for the park services to be closed. So Jason, maybe you and I can have a conversation with Natalie to get a sense. Um, our lobbyists did reach out to the, the state legislature and, and they're thinking about it. So we, we'll just see. Um, we, again, we don't know what's gonna happen until it happens. Um, let's see, what else? In November twenty-first, I've been asked to make a presentation at, um, the National League of Cities on designing for, it's a panel discussion. And it's designing for a cooler future, how cities are tackling extreme heat. And Alexi is going to help me with that because I have no idea how we're doing that. But I'm sure we have a lot of great things that we're doing to deal with extreme heat, cause we've been dealing with extreme heat forever here in Moab. And it's getting, it's getting more so. And then one of the most exciting things that's coming up is this Thursday at six o'clock, from six o'clock to eight-thirty or eight o'clock. There, um, part of the Red Rock Festival, Arts Festival, is a community con- conversation with food, with dinner. It's like conversation over dinner, catering conversations.
Yes.
Really, I mean, I just think it's wonderful. It's an opportunity for people to get together, share food, talk about things that they want to talk about that's not in a negative way. So I'll be going to that and, and introducing the program and, and you guys, you know, it's reservations, RSVP. They want to make sure that they don't run out of food. So if you're interested in going, I'd encourage you to. We don't want it to make it a political thing. That's the other thing to think about. Because we really want our community to sit down and talk to each other in a positive way in a time when there's so much negativity. Um, so anyway, I, we're hoping that if this is the success, that we'll do it more than once a year and that it won't necessarily be connected to the Red Rock Arts Festival. And, um, I've also been asked to ask you guys to pick up the things in your inbox.
We have an.
I guess. And they're full of things.
There are surprises in.
Yeah, right. There's some treats. Anyway, and you know, Caitlin, is there, is there a Mountain Pack conference or something coming up? Is that like in October?
Um, the, yeah, uh, Alexi will be going.
Okay, perfect.
Um, yeah, Mountain's twenty-thirty. Um, and then also the quarterly cast meeting will be in alignment with that.
Okay, great. Good. I just wanted to make sure we got that out there.
Yeah. You'll, I'm so excited for you guys to go.
All right, that's it. Although we do have to go into a closed session today to discuss reasonably or imminent, uh, litigation, if I could have a motion.
So moved.
No, you have to say it.
Uh, I moved to, we go into a closed session to discuss reasonably imminent, uh, litigation.
All right. Mentioned by Colin, second by.
Sorry.
Luke, all those in favor?
All right.
All right, we're in closed session.
No discussion.
What would happen if we voted?